Well, it is six o'clock. I'm going to open up the city council regular meeting for the city of Granbury. It is 6:00 PM on Tuesday, December the 19th, 2023. We're located in Granbury City Hall, 116 West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas, 76048. I'm happy to see all of our council men and women are here tonight. And we will start with the invocation. If Father Stewart will do us the pleasure. Thank you, sir.
Father, we thank you for the gift of another day. We thank you especially for this time of year for sending your son into the world to redeem us and to shine the light of your perfect wisdom throughout the human race. And we thank you for this city council and pray that you would help them as they make decisions under the lordship of Jesus Christ. We pray that you would reward them for the sacrifices they and their family make for them to serve us, pour out the spirit of wisdom and strength and confidence upon them, direct them wisely, help us to be good citizens, and at this time of year to be grateful that we have this great country, state, and town to be part of. We ask your protection especially for those in law enforcement and in our armed services, men and women who will be far, far away from their loved ones during this holiday season. Pour out your mercy and loving kindness upon them. And in everything, Lord, may we please you in what we say and do this night. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Now, we'll have the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Texas flag?
On the Texas flag, our pledge of allegiance is to the Texas, one state under God, one
Thank you. Thank you all, and thank you again, Father Stewart. I appreciate you stepping up and doing our invocation for us tonight. Thank you. We'll now move to proclamations and presentations. City council and city manager have a chance to issue encouraging statements to our staff. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, I would like to mention that the U.S. Arizona piece has been installed out in the hallway thanks to local donors coming up with that. I believe Mr. Wazewski had a big part in that, and so did the Pennels and the whole group from Memorial Lane. And we've got a nice little display out there that Aaron McLean and his team have worked to get that on display, and we wanted to recognize that tonight. I just wanted to also say Merry Christmas to all of our employees and thank y'all for a great year. You've put in a year of extremely hard work under extremely difficult situations with the cyber attack that we're still recovering from. Not all people have computers yet, and we're still working and delivering services to the city. So, thank y'all, and just wanted to let the council hear that. Thank you.
Thank you. Council?
Mayor.
Mr. Vale?
I just want to also echo that, you know, this has been a challenging year on a whole bunch of fronts, and, you know, the city staff and city team are just extremely resilient. And I think we just have a great group of people, and I just want to thank all the city employees for all their hard work this past year. And Merry Christmas to you and your family. Thanks.
Mr. Wadley?
You know, the city and the square, the park, it just looks awesome. The city staff has done a fantastic job decorating. I've had so many patients that have come in over the last couple of weeks commenting about how great the city looks, and this is just a great place to be at Christmas time. But I just want to thank all the staff for that, all the hard work they put into that.
Anyone else? Counsel? Okay. I can only echo what everyone else has said and do wish that the staff has a really great and safe Christmas. We would like to make sure that everyone's back here come the January 2nd, I guess. We, you know, we are blessed beyond our, what we deserve. They used to say I've way overkicked my coverage, I guess, but this is a, this is a pleasure. So, thanks to all of the staff for that. So, now, let's move to public comments on agenda items for non-public hearing agenda items, and we have no public hearing agenda items tonight, so I guess the wheel is open. Ms. Walker, do we have anyone? We have, these are later. We have no one. So, we're going to move right to the consent agenda. And all items on the consent agenda are routine or previously discussed items and will be approved with one motion. However, should a member of the city council wish to discuss any item, said item may be removed from the current agenda and considered under the deliberation agenda. Counsel, has anyone looked these over and have questions that they'd like to cover at this point? Mr. Rodriguez?
Mayor, I just got a comment on a couple of these consent agendas. You know, after looking at some of these treatment chemicals that we use, I just want to applaud the staff on finding companies that we can work with that provide the lowest amount of dollar figures when it comes to these and negotiating those terms. You know, when I looked at some of this sodium hydrochloride, you know, it's a big word, so I had to look it up. And, you know, normally it goes about $7, $8 a gallon, and, you know, the city staff is, you know, negotiating with them to get that reduced as well to about, you know, I think $3. But that's what the city is doing, is saving money for the city and trying to negotiate those contracts, so I want to applaud them on that. Also, on the number, the contract for 6.2 on the Esri enterprise agreement, after talking with the IT department, I just want to say the same thing with them. You know, they're negotiating on the terms and everything that we currently have in comparison to what we can get, and they're doing their due diligence, so I want to applaud them on that effort as well. That's all the comments I have on this.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez. And, you know, I'll point out that these are all previously discussed items, and it occurs to me that some of the time I get anxious and we start moving at a rapid rate up here, I do want everyone to understand that this isn't the first time that anyone on this council has seen this book. They've had it for over a week. They've visited with Mr. Kaufman. They've visited with staff. Any questions that they have, they have probably already answered. There's already been a lot of effort before it gets to this point, a lot of effort. So, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as is?
So moved.
Mr. Wadley makes a motion?
Second.
Ms. Burwell makes a second on that. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. I believe that will be approved 6-0. Okay? Got it. Thank you. All right. We can now move to agenda item 7.1. And this will be to consider adopting resolution number 23-29 canvassing the election returns and declaring the results of the December 9, 2023 general election runoff. Who will be presenting this? Anyone?
I can.
Please. Thank you.
So, if you will go to your Exhibit A of the resolution, you can see the votes cast by precinct and also by totals. And the resolution will let the record remain that Charles Beard received 318 votes, and Gary Skip Overdare will receive 617 points, our votes. So, obviously, you have an opportunity to peruse those results on Page 2 of that attachment of the exhibit and see exactly how the votes turned out per precinct, if you like. But these have been provided to us by our election clerk for Hood County, and we have confidence that they've been done right, and she's submitted them to you for your final consideration for approval. So, I guess staff would recommend that you adopt resolution 23-29.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Mayor.
Ms. Burwell?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt 23-29 canvassing of the election returns and declare the results of the December 9, 2023 general election runoff.
A second.
Mr. Rodriguez seconds that motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. That will pass 6-0. Congratulations to Mr. Overdare. So, what do we do next? Well, we're going to take a little bit of a break right here, and I think we have some things that we would like to say about Ms. Burwell before she vacates the dais. Uh-oh. Yeah-oh. And I am so disappointed that no one signed up to speak on this, but we'll get over it, I'm sure. Ms. Burwell, would you like to say anything in your defense?
In my defense? Absolutely. I didn't do it. This has been an incredible journey for me. I've been in office for six years now. Greg and I ran together in 2017, and then we both went unopposed in the next election cycle, and I have forged some amazing friendships and long-term bonds, and I really feel like we have, as a council, no matter who's been up here, figured out a way to work together to benefit the city, and I've appreciated all of you and the folks that I have, that I have worked with before. And Jeff? Just kidding. You can't hear me, is that what you're saying?
Oh, he's talking to me.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. But thank you, Granbury, for trusting me to be in this position for six years, and I will miss you. I'm not going anywhere. I have other things that I will be doing in Granbury with the community. I will continue to forge forward and work for the community, but I have really appreciated being here. Thank you for supporting me.
Before I give you this, I want to brag a little bit about success. You can drive by the new police station and think, Trish, you had a big part in that. All the infrastructure and all the things that we've done for those six years have been high-growth community activity. List too long to go over, but it's in that budget document. But thank you for everything you've done. We want to give you this clock as a token. Every time you look at it, I pray that you will remember your time spent here as happy days, and we're going to miss your logic and sound approach to the way you handle decisions and your critical thinking process. We can't thank you enough for serving our community. And for me personally, it's been a pleasure to serve, so thank you so much.
I think, I think, I think, yeah. I got here first. I get first here. This is the lady that would keep me straight in the back room.
Hey, Trish, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for just being an example of leadership within our community. Thank you for being an example on city council how to just look at things and give opposite or logical decision-making decisions. You know, you just, the way you make your decisions is unique, and I just appreciate your leadership, your candor, and the way you represent yourself and the city. Thank you very much.
Do I have to be nice? Okay. No, I, you know, unlike most of the council, I've had the pleasure to know Trish for well over a decade now, and I can tell you that she has always been someone that looks at life differently than I ever could. She takes a different approach, which has been welcomed on council and sometimes much needed. We'll miss you. It's been a pleasure working with you up here, and we look forward to what you're doing next. Thank you.
When he says different, he means warped sometimes. I don't know what to say. I'm going to miss Trish a lot. I didn't really know her until I ran for council. She steered me through social media. In fact, in fact, in fact, she said, "I can get this Facebook thing set up. Do you want to have any kind of, be able to get on it and add stuff?" I went, "I'll just mess it up." So, how about I just send you stuff and you put it on? You know, Trish has been great, and, you know, we've gone to conferences out of town. We've done so much together. She's so stable. I don't show much emotion, and man, she can just sit there. When I get kind of riled up about something, she's like, "Calm down. We got this." You know, and so, I'm just going to really, really miss you. I appreciate you being here.
Mr. Overdare will have very big shoes to fill. This is, this is a, we are going to miss you so much, but the words that you said about you will be around, we're going to remember those.
Well, I've had the privilege of sitting next to her for the last two years, and she really is a stalwart on the city council. She's just been amazing to work with. She's provided tremendous leadership, great passion, great knowledge. She really studies everything that comes before us on city council. She's been a joy to work with. You know, this is not the end of the journey here. I know that she's got other things planned. I'll have the honor of serving on the board at the Hood County Senior Center and hopefully working with her some. And Lori and I have a saying, it's like, "Live a great story." And we look forward to, you know, reading the next chapter of your great story, so make it a good one.
I have tissues here, just in case.
Trish, the one thing that I appreciate most about you is that you're the single council person who has always listened to me, so. Not everybody else always listens, but.
Doesn't mean she agrees with you.
You know, I was talking to Jim earlier, and I said, "You know, is there anything specific you'd like to hear?" And he said, "You know, say something personal." And I was like, "Yeah, I'm not sure you want to do that." Anyway, I have watched you go from Reiner to Burwell and been able to personally, outside of this dais, share some of those experiences with you, and I love that for you, and I love that for Jim, and I love the life that you guys have together, and I'm so happy for you for that and moving forward.
Thank you.
Can we get a picture back of each other?
Can we get it to color?
The tall people in the middle.
Great job.
We have high expectations. Okay. We're going to go to 7.2 and present a certificate of election and administer the oath of the office to the duly-elected Mr. Gary Skip Overdare, councilperson, place four. Mr. Overdare, I want to make sure that the first thing I'm doing is pronouncing your name correctly. Overdare? Overdare?
You learned well, didn't you?
I've had to. Okay. Judge, if you could come forward here, and we will administer the oath, and I will get this.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Never give a mic to a politician. I thought you were doing this for me. Mr. Overdare, put your toes. Go ahead and stand here, please.
Switch the plates out.
Yeah, because he'll raise it right there.
She's in the back.
Yes.
Okay. Raise your right hand, please, sir, and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Skip Overdare.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of city councilperson.
Of city councilperson.
Place four.
Place four.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
It's never official until you have your plaque, Mr. Overdare. So, this is the plaque. This can go on any of the walls that you choose to put it. Get this out of there.
I have something in there waiting for you.
Speak. Speak.
Yes. Yes. Trish, for these years, you're skipping to try and claim them.
Okay. Let's move to number 7.3, going to consider selecting a mayor pro temp from the five councilpersons available here. Mr. Wadley?
Ms. Mayor.
Yes?
I would like to nominate Stephen Vale as mayor pro temp. I've given this a lot of thought. Greg's been here six years. I've been here five years. Eddie's been here four years. Stephen is two. But Stephen was P&amp;Z for three years prior to that. He certainly understands the job, and the main reason is he's the most available of all of us. All of us work. We all have jobs. We come to as much as we can. Stephen goes to everything. He's at Rise and Grind every week. He's on other boards. I actually asked him to give me a list of some of the things he's done, and I've got that. But we all do things. We all are involved in this community, or we wouldn't be up here. But I think he's more involved than any of us, and I appreciate his service to the city of Granbury, so he's my nomination.
Okay. I hear a nomination for Mr. Stephen Vale. Do I hear other nominations? I hear no other nominations. I'm going to go ahead and close the nominations then. So, I guess we have to vote, and I believe that we have one candidate. His name is Mr. Stephen Vale. All in favor of naming Mr. Stephen Vale as our mayor pro temp? Please say aye. All opposed, say nay. Mr. Vale did not say nay, so I think we're good. Congratulations. Congratulations to all of you. There's a, don't ask me, because I would, I'd say anybody. It works well. Although, I will say, the young lady sitting back here in red, she did a fantastic job as mayor pro temp. If I was not available, she was available. And if I was not going to be here, I knew it was going to be handled great, so thank you, Trish. Thank you again. We're going to be saying that a lot. Okay. Okay. 7.4. Receive and consider adopting the Water and Wastewater Impact Fee Study presented by Rafftelis and Protect/Hebs and Todd on the recommendation of the Capital Improvement Advisory Committee. Consider setting the public hearing on February 6, 2024, at 6:00 PM at City Hall to consider amending the land use assumptions, a capital improvement plan, and amendments of the water and wastewater impact fees. Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you. Before I turn it over to Assistant City Manager Crownover, I want to just say a few words. This is a very important piece of legislation that y'all are considering tonight. As you know, we've had impact fees for a long time, not only the last five years, but the previous 10 years, and we're required by statute to review these every five years at a minimum and make adjustments as necessary. And obviously, our little town has grown rapidly. Some have put us into the category of being called a fast-growth city, which causes all kinds of increase in capacities and things of such. You know, as people move here, they don't bring their streets with them, they don't bring their water with them, and they don't bring their sewer treatment with them, or their natural gas, or their telephones, wires for their internet at their house. And all those services have to be expanded as our community expands, and there's a cost for that. So, staff has worked very diligently with the Capital Improvement Plan Advisory Committee and also with the consultants, the engineers, and I'll turn it over to Rick, but I want to say they've done a great job. I appreciate the hard work that goes into this, and the numbers are rather staggering if you look at the 10-year window, and I'll let y'all plow into it as you see fit. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Mayor, councilmember for Crownover, Assistant City Manager. It struck me as we were honoring Trish up there a while ago, that some of you were here five years ago when we did this, and Trish is one of them. And Trish, thank you for your leadership in that deal, and thank you for your leadership being on city council. It's been a pleasure to work with you, and staff appreciates all the support you give us.
You're welcome. Again, recently, the Capital Improvements Advisory Committee met with Protect/Hebs and Todd, and y'all approved a recent meeting, the capital improvement plan and Texas Local Government Code 395 in conjunction with the impact fee presentation that the advisory committee also received and approved and has made recommendations to you tonight for the adjustment of the impact fees, and those are in your packet. I'm not going to, I'm not going to give a lot of details because our consultant, Angie Flores with Rafftelis, has got a wonderful presentation that will outline what we're doing here tonight and hopefully answer just about every question that you may have. So, also, at the bottom of the agenda report is the current impact fees report. So, I think I'm going to turn it over to Angie and let her give the presentation, and we'll go from there. Okay? Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm Angie Flores, and I'm with Rafftelis. Glad to be here with y'all tonight. I'm going to just be walking through my presentation. I'll go through the impact fee process, talk a little bit about our current update, and then talk about the eligible capital costs that we've identified through the process, and finally, present to you the impact fee calculation itself and the committee recommendations. So, first, impact fee process. For those of you who haven't heard this before, the impact fee process is governed by Chapter 395 of the Texas Local Government Code. An impact fee is a one-time fee that is paid by new connections, so new development pays these fees, and it's intended to mitigate rate increases, rate pressures to your existing customers. So, basically, you'll hear the term, "It helps growth pay for itself." Impact fee revenue can be used to cover the costs of the projects that are identified in the 10-year capital improvement plan, which we'll go through here in a minute. which we'll go through here in a minute. Thank you. Sorry about that. And so it's construction, surveying and engineering, land acquisition costs, and then your engineering and financial consultant costs are eligible costs for your impact fee revenue. Again, the, any capital projects that the impact fee is used for must be identified in the 10-year CIP. So this process is very important for ensuring that those capital projects are approved and are on that plan. Impact fee revenue cannot be used for O&amp;M. So that's one important thing, that it cannot be used for repair and replacement project costs, for instance. So again, the Chapter 395 requires that you convene your Capital Improvement Advisory Committee, which has occurred. We've met with the advisory committee to review the land use assumptions, the capital improvement plan, as well as the impact fee calculation. So all of these items are required by Chapter 395. And so your advisory committee has gone through that process. The public hearing requirement, which is why we're here, is to set that public hearing and to publish notice, which is required to be published 30 days ahead of that public hearing. Throughout that 30 days, that report that I believe is in your packets must be made available if someone requests to review it. The report provides the recommendation from the committee and all of the details of the process. Any comments can be made at the public hearing or provided in writing prior to the public hearing. So a little bit about the 23 update. First, these are the impact fees that you adopted through the 2019 process. In 2019, the recommendation was that the impact fees be adopted in three steps and increased to the maximum allowable impact fee. And so your current impact fee is that year three effective February 2021. Those are the impact fees that are currently in place for water and wastewater. The impact fees, it's important as part of the process that the impact fees only be charged within the defined service area. The service area was defined based on land use assumptions that we developed as part of that process. And that the land use is important, obviously, to determine what the growth will be in the 10-year period. And, excuse me. The committee affirmed the land use assumptions. Your committee is made up of developers that provide input into that growth projection and provide comments about those growth projections and that land use assumptions. That land use growth is then used to develop the capital improvement projects that are required to serve that projected growth. And so the engineer develops that CIP based on that growth projection. This table represents the land use assumptions for the city of Granbury and the service area that I showed you here. And again, these detailed numbers are used to determine the growth in the 10-year period. So for the growth projection, we are projecting yearly growth there for water and wastewater. You can see it's a little different, basically, because there are some wastewater connections that do not get water service. And so that's the difference in the 10-year planning horizon. So eligible capital costs. So one of the things about the impact fee is that we are allowed to recover, if you will, a capital buy-in charge from your future growth. So to the extent that your existing facilities have excess capacity, we've included those costs in the impact fee calculation. And so this table represents the existing facilities that still have excess capacity for those new connections. For water, we've identified $57.1 million of existing capital costs. And then for wastewater, we've identified about $34.8 million of existing facilities with excess capacity. For future facilities that have been identified to provide service to your future growth, we've identified for water about $135 million and a half for water and then $99.8 million for wastewater. And if you have any detailed questions about these capital projects, Chris Hay from EHT is also here, if you have any questions there. So the total eligible cost that your impact fee revenue can pay for, based on the study, is $192.7 million for water and $134.6 for wastewater. Sorry. So the impact fee calculation, and again, this is defined in Chapter 395. The first step is to identify those capital costs by facility type. And then we divide those by the number of service units, or in this case, your living unit equivalents. One living unit equivalent is basically a residential-sized meter. And those are, depending on the larger size meters, then they're more than one LUE. And those are based on AWWA equivalent factors. We take the capital cost divided by those service units to get a cost per living unit equivalent. And then, based on Chapter 395, we must apply either a 50% amount to that cost per LUE or calculate a rate credit to get to the maximum allowable impact fee. So once we, you'll notice, you've noticed that in the capital improvements, we have those, all of those CIP projects just kind of in total detail. But one of the things that we do for the impact fee is to separate those costs into facility type. That allows the city to have a mechanism of providing a credit to the developers if they decide to build a storage tank, for instance. Then you can give them a credit on the impact fee for the contribution that they've made to your system. The impact fee is charged by meter size. Again, one living unit equivalent is equivalent to a residential meter. If you get a commercial customer that needs a two-inch meter, for instance, they'll pay for more living unit equivalents for that two-inch meter. So the next few sheets here are the actual calculation. I won't go through this in detail. I do want to point out that we do this by facility type. You'll see in there that we've got the existing and future facilities. We calculate the number of service units that can be served by the capacity on the system and then calculate the cost per LUE. And that's basically the process we go through for water and wastewater. This sheet here shows the, kind of the summary of all those calculations of the maximum allowable fee. So as I mentioned before, we are able to take either a rate credit or the 50% adjustment. And so here you see those two columns compared to each other. The rate credit represents the amount of revenue that you collect for these facilities through rates. And oftentimes, what that allows you to do is to calculate, to collect a greater amount of an impact fee than you would otherwise if you just did the 50% credit. So what we do is we take the highest of either the 50% rate credit or the rate credit. And what that resulted in for this calculation was an $8,111 maximum allowable fee for water and a $6,491 maximum allowable fee for wastewater, for a total of $14,602. So as I mentioned, we did meet with the advisory committee, and they did make some findings on our presentation. They found that the land use assumptions were reasonable, that the capital improvement plan was reasonable, as well as the impact fee calculation. Their recommendation to council is that they adopt the maximum allowable impact fee, but assess an amount that is phased in to that maximum allowable. So basically, the same concept that was followed in the last go-round. And based on that phase-in recommendation, this is what it would look like. So basically, the impact fee would increase to $10,000 for a 3/4-inch meter in '24, increase to $12,325, and then increase to $14,602 in '27. So a two-year break for that third step. So we did look at your neighboring communities to see where your impact fee stands in comparison to Cleburne, Weatherford, Benbrook, and Amud and Stephenville. As you can see there, Stephenville does not have an impact fee. Cleburne has not updated their impact fees since 2018. So their impact fees are slightly lower than yours. Weatherford, Benbrook, and Amud have all recently updated their impact fees. And you can see, Amud, their water impact fee is at $9,800, which is higher than where you currently are, but will be lower than that maximum allowable. So next steps is to have the, to have the public hearing and consider the adoption of the impact fee. I will now answer any questions you might have.
Counsel?
Mayor.
Mr. De.
Just a quick question. So when this was done prior, the rate increases were 2019, 2020, and 2021, right? Those three years in a row?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, yes, sir. Sorry.
I look like Trish.
Sorry.
It's the red jacket Jeremy's got on. This proposal's '24, '25, and '27. The '26, we're skipping '26 and going to '27?
There was just some concern about the fee going from $7,600 to the $14,602.
Okay.
And just having that one year in between.
Is there a reason that we don't do it at a five-year step? To make that progression a little less steep?
It's certainly an option.
I was just curious. I mean, that is a big jump. And just a question. I mean, the presentation is a lot of detail, a lot of numbers, very robust. You know, one of the things I did take a lot of time to look at was just looking at the projections on growth. Obviously, you know, with all the growth that we've had, you know, since the pandemic, and we're still in a moratorium, you know, a lot of this growth has kind of caught us off-guard. So I think those numbers really need to be spot-on. Otherwise, you know, all the other numbers that we have in here, you know, are, we're not going to be, you know, far enough ahead. So it sounds like all the due diligence has been done.
One of the requirements of Chapter 395 is that the impact fee be updated at least every five years. I have a lot of clients that will do it every three years if they start growing faster than projected. So that's always an option as well. But yeah, the council can adopt or assess something less.
So if we got in a situation, call it two years from now, or a year and a half or two years, we lifted the moratorium and things really took off, and we're going back and looking at the numbers, and we're tracking behind our growth projections, that we could always adjust that accordingly? Correct?
Yes.
With the public hearing?
Right. Right. You would have to go through the process of another update.
You know, I might just add, if I could bear. If you, I talked to a builder the other day, a home builder, and he pays somewhere in the neighborhood of $15,000 for a septic system to be installed in a new home. So that's how much things have gone up. So I want you to realize, back when we adopted these rates previously, a septic system was about $9,000. And so with that logic, you got to see that it's still cheaper to build in the city and tie on and pay those impact fees than it is to go drill a well and put in a septic system. So I think that's the whole gist, is this isn't what it's costing us, but this is the impact fee for, to get us to where we're subsidizing the cost of that capacity by 50%. Because we've already taken 50% of the real cost of what it's taken to provide that service out to that mathematical equation. And so I would hesitate to drag it out to '27, but that's what was recommended. You don't have to do what they recommend. But my thought process was to do it over a three-year period like we did last time. And these are for projects that are new. If they're already in the hopper, they're what they call vested. They don't have to pay that higher price. They're vested at the old price. So we've got at least 1,291 residential units that are going to be built at the existing impact fee price. So it's kind of scary when you look at that, just to start off with. It's going to cost eventually over $14,000 just to get your water and sewer. I mean, by the time you pay your connection fee, your meter fee, your all that, you're looking at, you know, quite a few more dollars. So I would just caution you. And tonight also, I think it's good for y'all to ask all the questions you can because what we're really asking for in the matter of a motion is to consider the date that's stated in the agenda item, February 6, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. to have a public hearing and consider adopting those land use assumptions, capital improvement plan, and the amendments of the water and wastewater impact fee. So we're not adopting it tonight, but you got plenty of time to think about it. And then we can get you more information to his staff and the engineers here, if you have questions for him as well. So we're glad to have this report and get it out to you before the end of the year and be able to figure out what we need to do next. Thank you.
So the vesting date is February 6, or?
The date of the ordinance that gets adopted.
Approved. Okay. So the 60, 90 days are already there. The cost today versus the impact fees? I mean, are we paying a dollar and collecting 50 cents? Or what is that ratio?
It's a little bit more than 50 cents, just because we're doing the rate credit. Let's see. Looks like for water, it ends up being about, what is that, about 90%? And then for wastewater, it's a little less. That's trying to do this in my head.
So 90% of what?
So as I mentioned, you get to do the cost per LUE. You get to apply either 50% or the rate credit. The rate credit is based on what you're paying for on your water system through rates. And so it ends up being that you can collect about 90% through the impact fee. And then for wastewater, it's a little less at about, can't do that in my head, about, what is that, 60% maybe?
Okay. So describe the 90% and the 16%. Is it 90% of our actual cost we are recovering?
Yeah.
And 16% of our actual?
60.
60. Oh, good.
Yeah, that you would be able to collect through, from the developer, through that impact fee.
Right. Right. And the projecting in '27, 90% and 60%, still the same ratios?
Well, those percentages are for the maximum allowable, so that, I wasn't calculating that for the steps. Sorry, I didn't calculate that for the steps. But yeah, if we're stepping it up, $10,000, I think, was the first total, so 14. Yeah, you're making me do math in my head here.
I would add that we're going to have to spend $132 million in the next 10 years on the water system. And when you think about that, that's a staggering number for a tax base of 12,500 people.
And I will say-
The growth is definitely coming to pay.
Right. And I will say that some of these projects were in the CIP in the last update, and the cost for those projects has gone up significantly, just like everything else. And so that's part of what's also driving that increase. So keep in mind that if you, what you don't collect through impact fees, you have to collect through rates.
Mr. Wadley?
Yeah. I understood the math. I mean, it's, here's what it costs, here's how many people are going to pay for it. You know, it's kind of simple math. What I was kind of shocked at was the comparison to neighboring communities. When, like Cleburne's, looks like they could double theirs to their maximum, and it would be half of what our maximum could be. So I guess my question is, I don't know if we've, if we talked to the folks that do business there, how do they keep theirs so low? I mean, again, I understand why ours needs to be what it needs to be. I don't know that I have a problem with that. I don't understand why these other ones are so much lower than ours.
For Cleburne, they haven't done an update since 2018, so that's likely one reason. They haven't taken into account, you know, all the cost increases that have just occurred in the past five years. So, you know, for them, I can, that would be my bet, that that's why. I'm not sure why they didn't adopt the maximum allowable and are only doing half. But that's certainly something we can find out before the public hearing.
Another thing is the cost of construction that we're facing is substantially higher for the new growth that we're sustaining compared to the new growth that they already have the capacity to supply. So that all goes into it, into the formula, because the higher the cost of what we've got to build in the next 10 years compared to what they've got to build in the next 10 years could be substantially different. For instance, our desal plant has to be a new one built in the next 10 years, and that's a very expensive water filtration system. And it costs a whole lot more to treat Lake Granbury water than it does well water, if they're relying on well water. So our engineer is here, he probably addressed some of those capacities to cities that he knows, but at the bottom, at the end of the day, it's all about the cost moving forward. And if these folks aren't moving forward to do their homework, then they're going to be in a situation, they may not be growing at the same rate we're growing as well. So it's kind of hard to break that down. I'm not sure where Stephenville, I think Stephenville buys their water at a wholesale price from a water supplier, and so that's a fixed cost that they're not having to worry about capital improvements. And there may be an assessment coming their way someday from Lake Palapinto, but until they get that, they won't know what it is. So they're substantially lower than us. And then, let's face it, the top treatment facilities that we're building for the wastewater is more expensive than, say, like a lagoon system out in the country that you would use to treat water and irrigate with it. And, you know, you got seven or eight sections of land that you're irrigating with. So it's just a difference in the way that our environment is. The cost of doing business here is higher than it is in some cities.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Mr. Rodriguez.
I'd like the council to consider the phase-in recommendation to be '24, '25, and '26 consecutively. I mean, once building starts, those floodgates are going to open, and there's just going to really impact the infrastructure once again, once everything is back up to running, there's no moratorium. So to get this up and running and not have that delay of that year would benefit the
Agreed. Mr. Corrigan's job. No other questions from the council? Mr. Kaufman?
So what staff is requesting is for the council to establish February 6, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall to hold a public hearing, and then also consider amending the land use assumptions, the capital improvement plan, and amendments of the water and wastewater impact fees. So I'm begging for a motion.
Does anyone want to make this motion? I will, but not. I'll make the motion. We adopt the wastewater and wastewater impact fee study presented by Raftellus and then Protec, Hibbs, and Todd. And that is on the recommendation of our capital improvement advisory committee, and will consider setting the public hearing on February 6, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. at City Hall to consider amending the land used assumptions, a capital improvement plan, and amendments of the water and wastewater impact fee. I'll modify that motion to say that we will set a public hearing on February 6, 2024, at 6:00 p.m.
Second.
Mr. Vail, second to motion. Discussion. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Aye, aye, and a nays. It's 6-0. Thank you, and thank you for the fine work of the committee and staff and our engineering partners here. Thank you so much. This is, I think, as Mr. Vail said, a lot of numbers. It was blinding at some times. 7.5, discussion and possible approval to amend the previously approved location of a historic marker to recognize the African-American school. Mr. Kaufman?
Yes. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Aaron McLean to come forward. He's been the point person on this project since it began with Granbury Independent School District. And he has also been responsible for placing many historic markers along the Moments and Time Trail, and that's how this recommendation came about, from the school. So I'll turn it over to him to update us on where we're at and what's going on, and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. So to kind of update you on what's been going on, this did start back in 2020. The school approached the city looking for a public place to display a Texas Historic plaque, and the plaque was to recognize an African-American school that once stood here in Granbury. And my contact back then was Randy Leach. Want to kind of give a shout-out to Mr. Leach. You know, he's retired two or three years ago, but he's been good enough to come forward and have some meetings with us about this issue. So we appreciate him. So in 2020, so the city was just really an avenue to try to find some land to display this. The school had come across some old records identifying the African-American school and wanted to have that school recognized. So in 2020, I took this to the Parks Board to discuss a location. And the nearest public or park property to the original location of this school was Lambert Branch Park, which is over there near the post office, and the Hike and Bike Trail, the Moments and Times Hike and Bike Trail runs just to the south of that park. The African-American school once stood on Keith Street, which is northeast part of town. So the Parks Board had voted to have the monument placed on the Hike and Bike Trail at Lambert Branch Park, because we have lots of other plaques placed along the Moments and Times Trail. Some of those recognize a structure that once stood on that property. Some of them are just in the general vicinity of a structure. For instance, the drive-in movie theater. That plaque is way north of the theater, but you can see the theater in the distance. After Parks Board approved the location, it did come to council also back in 2020, and the same ideas were presented to council, and they also approved. Since then, so the plaque has not been installed. The plaque, we have received the plaque. It is being stored at the courthouse. James Dickens, he is our local representative that works with the Texas Historic Commission, and the plaque is in his possession at this time. So there has been a local citizen that has some connections to that school come forward and express some interest in having the plaque actually placed on Keith Street, as close to the location that the structure once stood. And I believe you can see on the map and in your attachment, you've got a green oval to the bottom part of your map. That is the currently approved location. That's Lambert Branch Park, just to the north of that oval, and that oval is on the Hike and Bike Trail. Up to the right top section of that map is a red oval. That is Keith Street, and the property to the right is our fire training center. It is city property, but it is not accessible by the public. That's the desired location of the plaque by the citizen, which is where that, we are told where the school once stood. So we come before you today with this new option, new location. Staff approves, the approval of the new location. In your packet, you have the minutes from the Parks Board meeting and the council meeting. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Mr., anybody have comments? Mr. Wadley?
So that new location's not accessible by the public?
It can be viewed, but you can't walk up and, you know, put hands on the monument. So it would be placed, to be on our property, it would be placed behind a chain-link fence that encircles the fire training center. But the Texas Historic Commission specs that the plaque need to be placed on a 3x3 concrete slab. Our idea was to place the concrete slab just over the fence, up against the fence, with the plaque mounted in the center of it, so it can be viewed. That would be easier for our maintenance, you know. We mow and maintain part of that property and the fence line, so we would continue to mow around the concrete slab. You would be able to view it, you just wouldn't be able to, unless the fencing was changed and some place to park, you know, off the street, you wouldn't be able to actually walk up and put hands on the plaque. Keith, that is a dead-end street at this point, so it's not like it gets lost the traffic.
It seems like it'd be a lot easier for folks to see at the current location. I mean, more people would, you know, would see it. I know when we travel, I like, you know, I'm not going to say I stop along the highway at every historical marker you see signs for, by any means, but I do enjoy seeing stuff like that and walking up to it and reading about what happened. And, you know, I realize a lot of them, you know, it doesn't mean it happened right there, but it was there at some time in the vicinity. I don't know, it just seems like, you know, along the Hike and, the Moments and Time Trail, the Hike and Bike Trail, you know, people use that a lot. And I think, I don't know, it just seems like the existing location would be, would get a lot more exposure to the public than a place that you'd have to know to go look for, or you'd never see it.
Comments? Mr. Vail?
Eric, is it a monument, or does it look like a plaque?
It's a bronze plaque on a post, just like the historical marker that you see along the roadways.
Okay. I got you. Okay. Thanks. Yeah, I meant to get up there, and I just didn't. And I was trying to look at the map, because it looks like East Grove kind of runs into, you know, that area there. So that deadens to the south of where the circle is? Is that right?
That's correct. Right on that corner, past that red oval, is a gate to a, it's a private drive.
I got you. I mean, so there really isn't much traffic down that road, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, I kind of, you know, I kind of concur with Bruce on this, that, I mean, if we're going to put it someplace, it'd be nice for the public to have a better view of, you know, of what that was and, you know, the historical meaning to the city. Just my opinion.
The other comments?
Yeah, I mean-
Mr. Corrigan?
I think most of my comments have been said already. Was there any specific reason outside of the obvious that that is where the building was, that it was to be moved, or?
This citizen, I'm not certain if they attended that school, but he did say that he had been babysitting that school by, I believe, his sister before. I was under the impression that his family attended the school, and he just, he wanted it to be placed on the original site.
I certainly don't have an issue placing it where the school was. I mean, logically, that makes sense, but if the intent is for people to be able to see the plaque and read the plaque and know where the school was located, that's not going to happen on that site. And I can tell you, in the years I've spent driving to that training field, I've never once, outside of maybe a city truck, seen anyone drive down that road.
I can't stand up here and say I disagree with you. I think that's the reason the original site was chosen. I just wanted to bring this idea to you, because it was expressed to us.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Overdue?
If I could just ask a question. What does the plaque actually say? Does it say on this site in 18 whatever?
I can read it off my phone, if that would work. I wasn't able to get a copy of this to include in the agenda, but I did view it and take a picture of it, if that would be all right. It mentions some other structures also. In the 1860s and '70s, African-Americans in Granbury fought for educational opportunities, but local and state officials continuously denied them public schools. Despite these challenges, two schools were established in southwest Granbury for their children to further their education. The first named Mount Zion was located a few miles outside of Granbury, and the second, Mount Ebo, was located in the southwest part of town. To provide land for the Mount Ebo school, the black community deeded a house and other lots they owned. According to school records, 26 students attended Mount Ebo in 1880. The July 27, 1893 issue of the Granbury News reported on a petition by white citizens to move the school to the northeast side of town, and another petition signed by black and white citizens opposed the relocation. Records are incomplete, but it is believed that the school moved to a lot on Keith Street, the location in question now, in the northeast section of town in 1893 or soon after, and became known as Keith Street School. The Mount Ebo Baptist Church was also located next to the school. Over the years, the school continued to educate many generations, despite attendance numbers tending to fluctuate. In 1922, a school report lists 35 black students attending Granbury schools. A new one-room school building was completed in 1946 with Eva Mae Williams teaching. Finally, in 1964, faced with losing funds from the federal government, Granbury ISD integrated the schools, and students were bused to other schools. The Keith Street School was rendered obsolete. On June 21, 1987, the school building succumbed to fire. For nearly 100 years, the school provided vibrant civic life and opportunity to the African-American community of Granbury.
Well, I mean, it sounds like it-
Well, I mean, it sounds like it calls out the fact that there was a school in Granbury, and it gives different locations in different directions. I mean, and certainly it does mention the location of Keith Street, but I don't know that that's significant in people being able to view the fact that there was a Black school in Granbury. And if, and the fact of the matter is that if nobody's gonna see it being over on Keith Street, then what significance does it actually have? So I would say that the initial location indicated would probably draw more attention, and more people would recognize the fact that there was a Black school here in Granbury.
Yes, Mr. Kaufman?
This is why y'all get paid the big bucks.
About to find out. Mr., there's not just one individual that's come forth and asked why this is. There's one individual that has firsthand knowledge of that, and a citizen, very good citizen of the city of Granbury for quite a while. And his understand, I mean, his knowledge, his firsthand knowledge is that this is where the school is. His request is, this should be where the historical marker is. We did not have a school sitting on the other side of the lake. We had a school on this side of the lake. The other comments that you will get from the local historians are such as, it is a historical marker. It is not just a historical marketing product. It is a marker of an area, a space, a spot. The other comments that you will get is, if you're just gonna put up markers, as they're associated with Granbury, why don't we put them out here on the mall so that they're really easy to read? Just line them up. So there are other people that are not enamored with the spot on the lake, and that's why this has come up. And since before, you know, we put down, before we put down the concrete, we want to make sure that it is in the place that it'll stay, so we won't be moving the concrete around. There is no restriction, as I understand it, from the Texas Historical Association as to which of these locations we choose. They're both options to us.
That's correct. I just want to be notified of the location once determined.
And there is no disagreement that it will probably get less views, significantly less views, in the Keith Street location versus the trail. At the same time, we've had this request, and as Chris says, this is why we get paid the big bucks. More questions? Comments? Mr. Corgan?
Not so much a question. Well, I guess it is partly, but I wouldn't mind placing it on, for the reasons that Mayor just mentioned, placing it on the spot if there was some other indicator, some other thing we could maybe put on the hike and bike trail or somewhere else in town that would lead people to go to that spot. I mean, I'd hate for us to, understanding the relevance, I would hate for us to put it somewhere that, I mean, not to change your words, but it will never be seen unless someone is actively seeking that out and that location.
I know there's some education that takes place with visitors that come in to visit Granbury about the history of our town. We could use that location, you know, to educate people of the marker. I'm not certain. I know we have a cemetery map now. You know that people can tour prominent, you know, founders of our community who are laid to rest in our cemetery. I'm not certain if we have anything on the hike and bike trail. I know there's a trail map. I don't know that it spells out or highlights the historic monuments or plaques along the trail, but that might be one option, just to be sure, you know, have a means to educate the people of the location.
I could go ahead and tell you that I believe there is a database on Texas Historical Commission website that lists every historical marker in this county. The county may have a similar list maintained by the Hood County Historical Commission. So the folks that look for these markers know where to find them, and so I wouldn't worry about that. The issue that I think's being voiced here is the folks that don't know about those resources won't know about this marker whatsoever, and I think that's a decision y'all need to make. And I wouldn't be opposed to ordering a second plaque if that would solve the problem, so, and paying for it. It's probably about $3,000.
Well, and Greg kind of said something about that, too. When you read the plaque a minute ago, it talks about a second school. It talks about an original location prior to Keith Street. I mean, it had a whole lot more information on than just here on Keith Street was where the school was. And so I'm still, that was, I thought that was great information, and I'd like people to be able to see that. You know, the original location is by a park, and I know we've talked in the past about developing that park even further, and as more people go there, and they're just walking along, around the park, they'll see that and get to read about, you know, some of the history that it's important here in Granbury. And so I like what Mr. Kaufman just said, and Greg alluded to that also, having a, maybe a smaller plaque that says, here's where it was, and that could be over on Keith Street.
We could certainly look into that, get some pricing, whatever path I need to take.
Mr. Corgan?
I mean, not to kick the can down the road, but, I mean, I think I'd, personally, I would rather see us get those pricings, know exactly what we're talking about, and then potentially place the one we have in the existing location, and then on Keith Street where the school was, place something that essentially says the same thing, but may also include, you know, on this site was, or to some, you know, whatever those words need to be. That way, people can have the opportunity to see it as they're walking through the hike and bike trail, and then also go to the location and see the plaque there that identifies where the school was actually located.
I don't know. So I, once this approval was given, I wasn't involved anymore. So, and I don't know if it really took from 2020 till now to get this plaque
I would hope not.
in possession.
They got it two weeks ago.
Okay. So if we go through those same means, it may take that long. If we're in fact gonna have a Texas Commission Historic, you know, plaque in that location, it's, you know, it could be that long again. I don't know how the process goes, honestly.
My question is, if it took us that long, 2020 to now, did we submit a site for that placard and say that this is where it's gonna be at? And can we deviate from that once we've already submitted that application?
I believe, so I believe, so I didn't turn in the application. The local rep did that, but I'm under the impression they had with the application to turn in where we proposed and where it was approved to be located. But I'm being told now that we can deviate from that as long as we let them know where the final resting point of this plaque is.
And, Aaron, we don't have an exact location off of Keith Street. Is that correct?
We've, well, there was old records. There was old, an old blueprint that I saw that showed two structures that were drawn in there. Of course, Keith Street was different. You know, all that area was different. The lake wasn't here, so it just showed a drainage easement separating, you know, what we now call Lambert Branch Park and Keith Street. So the landscape was totally different. But the citizen we met with, you know, he has pointed, and he's lived in that area his whole life, and he said it was there.
Okay. So I would like to add something to your question. Typically, when you install a historical marker on a structure or a building, there are all kinds of restrictions going forward about what you can do with that building and that land and the different purposes it can serve. My concern that just came up on my radar was if we identify this place as the sacred ground of the only known school for the African-American society of the 1880s and 90s and early teens, are we limiting the use of that 11 acres in some other way that we don't know about? So with that in mind, I would hesitate to do anything with it, and I would recommend, let's just table, let me do some more research on what would happen if we came up with a plaque just for that site, just identify that school all by itself, and work from that angle. And I can get with our historical marker rep, Mr. Dickens, and look at that and try to learn more about this and bring it back to you at a later date.
Thank you.
Mayor, I suggest we take no action on this and let the staff provide us with more information on this.
Let me just make a comment. I look in the room. Everybody that was on this meeting in October 20, 2020 is currently in the room. So does anybody want to add anything to this that we may be missing up here? Mayor Hewlett, Councilman Mobley, Councilman Burwell? Mr. Rodriguez, would you like to make a, oh, Mr. Hewlett?
Counsel, Mayor, City Manager. I had talked to the citizen and had some conversation with him, and, you know, he made a lot of sense about putting the plaque exactly where the structure was. I guess he related it to somewhat like you, when you're traveling down all the highways of Texas and you see there's a historical marker somewhere, you go to, and, Aaron, I don't know if this is gonna have that number recorded on a app where you can bring it up. Do you know where that's gonna be on the historical marker, the app?
I failed to take a picture of the very top of that marker, and they say that's where they usually are. Someone else had mentioned that also.
So a lot of that time, when you go down and you actually punch that number in, and you may drive out here to somebody's farm in the back of the farm somewhere and there to be, because that's exactly where the marker belong. So, you know, it's not like you got them all lined up on the freeway. They're not all down the freeway where you can stop and look at them. They are at the place. And talking to the man, talking to the citizen, he's pretty avid about it because he has family. He's probably the only person in this community that has connections with that school and probably the church and everything that went with it. And talking to him, he was, really felt that that's where it needed to be, where they had had the prior council, which, when he came to me, I was a part of that. And I said, well, I don't have a problem saying, yes, I agree that it probably should be changed someplace else, because I wasn't aware that that's exactly where it was. And I was myself looking at where, let's put it somewhere where a lot of people can see it. And I hear the council talking a lot like that also today. But with that said, this member feels real avid that, you know, it should be at that point. But I think there are some things that you can do to make it aware that that is at that point, if people want to go look at that and mark it off of their checklist or go see what it's all about and, you know, to get educated on it. But I, for one, and this citizen, for one, is felt really strongly about putting this marker at that point, because, like he said, and I think the mayor indicated that, is, you know, you could put all the markers and line them up where it'd be convenient for everybody just to look at all of them, but put them where they belong. So, thank you, counsel.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. So, do we, anybody have a suggestion on how to split this baby? Did you make a motion, Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes, Mayor. I just make, I don't know if it's considered a motion. I just ask that the council take no action on this item.
I think it would need to be a motion that we could second.
So I make a motion that we postpone indefinitely this item until staff is, can provide us with more information. The impact that Mr. Kaufman was talking about to that property and the possible cost of a second marker, although after what former mayor just said, I'm maybe leaning towards putting it where it belongs. Anyway, but we need to know about the impact to that land. So that's my motion. We postpone indefinitely until staff has more time to research this.
Second.
Mr. Vale, second to that motion. Discussion? No one else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays, so we will table that motion indefinitely, or table that agenda item indefinitely.
You know, I might just close this conversation with, it could be that we need to do more recognition of that site as simply a plaque. So we need to look at this and bring that back to you, more so than what the school created and dreamed about, maybe, just a simple marker saying it was somewhere. But maybe there's something else we could do at that location as well, and we'll look at those issues for you as well and come back with recommendations.
Very good.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Hey, Mayor, before we get off the
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
off this topic, you know, also, Chris, if you could just look at, I know that Aaron was talking about making it, the only way to make it accessible to the public and to get really close is maybe change the fencing, and maybe that needs to be considered if they want to look at it, to read it, to get close up to it, to take pictures of it. Maybe take that consideration is look at the fencing around the structure where we're gonna put it at.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. All right. We will move right along to 7.6. As per our rules and procedures, we determine and consider adopting the county rules and procedures, but we first will discuss, are there any changes to our existing rules and procedures that are being recommended by council? I hear that there are no changes. I hear a motion to adopt the city council rules and procedures as they stand today. Mr. Corgan makes the motion?
Second.
Mr. Vale makes the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. That passes 6-0. We will move to 7.7. Consider adopting ordinance number 23192 for the disannexation of Contrary Creek Road and adjacent 37.213 acres from the city limits of the city of Granbury as shown in the attached ordinance. Mr. Kaufman?
Mayor, counsel, this is an item that we discussed during the intergovernmental meeting with the county. We were seeking financial assistance from them to reconstruct the road that's in the city limits on Contrary Creek Road, and advised them that without their assistance, we would disannex the property. And so that's where we've percolated this agenda up, and we've had it surveyed just for Contrary Creek to the south, and I'll turn it over to Deputy City Manager Michael Ross to go over that. Can y'all hear me better? Not much, not much. We're having trouble. I'm getting texts. I can't hear. Sorry.
Carter, do you have that picture drawing? Thank you. Can I see the other one first? Thank you, Mayor, counsel, Mr. Manager. As Chris said, this is regarding the disannexation, proposed disannexation of Contrary Creek and the adjacent 37.213 acres. You'll see from 2019, this was that entire area of the city that was annexed, and what we're proposing is that where it says subject track, that triangle be disannexed, including Contrary Creek for that small segment. What we've come to learn is that that small segment of Contrary Creek Road serves an area of unincorporated territory that's in Hood County. They're not city residents that live back there, and so for the city to maintain that small segment of road doesn't make sense. And so to go along with the road itself, we are proposing the adjacent track, the subject track as well, and we're asking that you approve the adoption of ordinance number 2392 for the disannexation of Contrary Creek Road and the adjacent acres from the city limits of the city of Granbury. And I'm happy to go into any more. And I'm happy to go into any more detail that you'd like. Answer any questions.
So, mayor?
Mr. Rodriguez?
Michael, is that whole red road, the red, going to be disannexed? Is that what you're saying?
At the top, where it says Contrary Creek Road, that part of it would, yes, sir.
And my question, I understand it's Contrary Creek Road, but the red on Highway 144 as Morgan Street, as it's labeled here, that's not going to be?
That stays in the city limits, yes, sir.
Okay.
There's an exhibit in your packet that has a hatch marked on it.
Sorry, Carla, will you show that one? Thank you.
It actually sho, there you go. It shows the actual track. But 144 will remain in the city limits. Contrary Creek Road and the adjacent property owned by, one individual owns all the property surrounding that church property. So the value of taxes that have been contributed since this was annexed adds up to $258 to the city coffers. It makes very little economic sense to anticipate enough revenue to replace probably three quarters of a million dollars worth of road construction. So we'll let the county spend our taxpayer dollars, they do tax each one of us, for road and bridge tax, and they certainly have a place to spend it on this project.
Other questions?
Thank you. It answers my question.
This needed the other drawing.
Looking at this drawing helps. Thanks.
Any other questions? I hear a motion to adopt ordinance number 23-92 for the disannexation of Contrary Creek Road and adjacent 37.213 acres from the city limits of Granbury as shown in the attached ordinance and map.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance 2392.
And second that motion.
Motion is made. Motion is seconded by Mr. Wadley. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. It passes 6-0. Okay. Gentlemen, I now declare that the Granbury City Council is convened in an open session that all members are present. The city council go into closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections. 551.071, consultation with attorney pending or contemplated litigation. 551.072, deliberation regarding real property. And 551.087, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, Project Poker Face, Project Grace, and Project Supper Time. I did not name these. We are now into executive session. Thank you. I now declare that the Granbury City Council reconvenes in an open session. There was, there was no action taken in closed session. All council members are present. Any other comments, any other business?
Mr. Mayor?
And Mr. Vale?
Yes, I'm going to authorize the city manager into, enter, into the development agreements with Grace Classical Christian Academy and the W. Michael Thomas Family Trust and the Harvey Ike Family Trust. Second.
I hear a second from Mr. Obergeier. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. I hear no nays. It is passing 6-0. Are there other items of business?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Vale?
Move to authorize the city manager into, into development agreements with BW Gas and Convenience Real Estate LLC and Blackburn Ranches LLC. Second.
Mr. Wadley seconds that motion. Any discussion? No. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That one passes 6-0. Is there other business? There being no other business, I announce that this meeting is adjourned.